Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. The regular meeting of the City Planning Commission will be called to order and we'll begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as advisory board to the city council. It is a responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendation on land use and zoning matters. Conditional use permits and minor amendment requests will have final action here this evening unless appealed to the city council in writing within five days. Any decision made on preliminary subdivision plans or future land use amendment requests tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the third council meeting of the month. Any decision made on rezoning requests, major amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the first council meeting of the month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. Any action taken here tonight on a final development plan is final. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff and the Planning Commission applies the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the City 2015 Land Use Plan. Second, the planning staff recommends approval of the request. And third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the ordinance. Once the consent agenda items are approved, you are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on each item. Second, the petitioner will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner, anyone from the audience who wishes to address a particular agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission other than staff move to the podium microphone, identify themselves, and state their address for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask you please either turn off or silence your cellphone and pager. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
Consent agenda items. Item number one is approval of the August 6, 2008 minutes of the regular meeting. Item two is plats. Item three is a rezone from the AG Agriculture District to the RS2 Residential District for allowed uses at West Culbert Avenue at the end of West 60th Street. Item four is a rezone from AG Agriculture District to the RS2 Residential District for allowed uses at southeast corner of East 26th Street and Highway 11. Item five is a rezone from the O Office District to the RA1 Residential District for allowed uses at West 85th Street and South Rambler Place. Item six is a major amendment in the Sanford USD Medical Center Plan Development District to revise subarea boundaries at northwest corner of West 18th Street and South Grange Item seven is a preliminary subdivision plan for Galway Park Phase 5 addition in the RS2 Residential District for future development of residential uses at west of Culbert Avenue off end of West 60th Street. Item eight is a preliminary subdivision plan for Copper Crest Circle, an extension of Copper Creek addition in the RS2 Residential District to develop single-family residential lots at southeast corner of East 26th Street and Highway 11. Item nine is a conditional use permit in the RS2 Residential District to allow daycare center at 700 South Sneve Avenue. Item 10 is a conditional use permit in the S Institutional District to allow a daycare center at 5500 West 26th Street. Item 11 is a conditional use permit in the S Industrial District to allow daycare center at 6120 South Charger Avenue. And item 12 is final development plan in subarea E of the Diamond Valley Plan Development District to construct a banquet hall reception center at East 73rd Street and South Cliff Avenue. Those are the items on the consent agenda. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to move any of those to the regular If not, any Planning Commission members? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda is passed.
Commissioners, my name is Dave Loveland and I'll be representing planning staff on items this evening. I did want to inform you that items 15, 16, and 17 of the regular agenda, we are asking for deferral on those.
Okay. Thank you. Item 15 is a rezone from the O Office District and RA1 Residential District, C4 Plan Commercial District, and the RA1 Residential District for allowed uses at East 41st Street and South Dakota Highway 11. Item 16 is a rezone from the RD Residential District and the RS2 Residential District to the RD Residential District and RA1 Residential District for allowed uses at East 41st Street and Highway 11. And item 17 is a rezone from AG Agriculture District to the RD and RA1 Residential Districts for allowed uses at East 41st Street and Highway 11. All three of those have been deferred, and then also item number 18 has been deferred by the applicant, and that is a conditional use permit in the AG Agriculture District to allow a sand and gravel quarry at 5020 East Rice Street. So is there a motion to approve the regular agenda with items 15, 16, 17, and 18 deferred?
So moved.
I second.
There's a motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The revised regular agenda has been approved. So our first item tonight is item 13, a revocation of conditional use permit 2002-08-11 allowing motor vehicle display and sales within an existing commercial parking lot in the C2 General Commercial District at 4915 North Cliff Avenue. Staff report.
Good evening. My name is Steve Randall. I'll be representing planning staff on this and other items this evening. This is a revocation hearing. It's a, if you decide to proceed with revocation, it would go forward to the city council for them to have a revocation hearing. They are the ones who approved the conditional use in the first place. On August 20, 2008, the planning director did send to the applicant a notification, a notice, that we have found that the terms and conditions of their conditional use permit have not been met since it was approved back several years ago, and that the petitioner should be present at tonight's evening meeting to answer any questions of the Planning Commission and to present any reason why this should not go forward for revocation. The applicant's owners are represented by Dale Olson, Olson Realty. It's a approximately two-acre site. I believe you have seen it before, some of you, when it came through for conditional use approval in 2002. It was approved by the city council on September 16, 2002, and became effective on October 11. And based on the inspections of the subject property by city staff on July 15 and August 18, and subject to the conditions of permit revocation stated in the zoning ordinance, this hearing is being held this evening. You have in your information packet a plan, that was a site plan that was approved and went forward through the Building Services and Zoning Office for approval of a construction permit and occupancy. However, the terms of the conditional use permit were not met. That is, the zoning requirements for improvements on the site in terms of landscaping, wheel stops at the edge perimeter of the paved areas, and the marking according to the plan have not been provided. Since that time, the site has deteriorated somewhat in condition. And while the conditions for approval have not been met, the applicant has provided a letter, which is also included in your information packet, stating the reason that they were not making the, some of the improvements was because they were waiting for street improvements on 60th and on Cliff. That was a letter from the applicant. It was not one of the conditions for approval that they would be deferred from making the improvements until those street improvements were made. So the applicant took it upon themselves to do that. And since that time now, the zoning office and the planners have observed that conditions are still not met. There is no schedule for street improvements, and now is the time for the applicant to respond to any questions you might have about making those improvements and a timeline for doing so. The applicant did come in and talk to planning staff several times about the conditions for approval, their plan for making the improvements, some of the reasons for the delay in making improvements, and staff responded that they would have to talk to the Planning Commission about those things if they expected to go forward with continuing their conditional use permit. Staff has not seen a timeline for making the improvements or plan for doing so, and is therefore recommending that the conditional use permit be revoked. We've had no other contact other than from the applicant about it, and that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve?
Steve, how recent was your conversation with Mr. Olson?
Today, this afternoon, yes. He came in and he had a, he had a plan. He was thinking of suggesting a little different plan than the one that he had proposed. He didn't need quite as much of the site for selling automobiles and cars and trucks. It was a little different layout, and he wanted to talk to you about that. He also wanted to talk to you about the reasons why he hasn't made the improvements today. I don't know if he's here this evening or not.
Questions for Steve?
Steve, if we revoke this, what procedures does the petitioner then have to go through? This goes to council?
It would go to a public hearing with the council, and they would have the power to revoke the conditional use.
He could then start an application to reapply?
We talked about that this afternoon. He could reapply with a different plan, the scaled-back plan that he was showing me this afternoon, if he wanted to do so.
Steve, excuse me. I would just notice in here, this was originally approved in 2002. He was contacted in 2003. Then the next contact with him was July of '08. There was a five-year period there that no one had any conversation with him.
Actually, I think he sent his letter during that timeframe stating that he was waiting for the street improvements to go in before he finished his project.
And the street, that 60th Street North is not on the CIP, or there's no?
Not on the CIP. It's not in a state highway schedule.
Thank you, Steve.
Steve, the plan that he showed you today, the scaled-back one, was that acceptable? Or?
The plan that I saw was scaled back in terms of the size of the property that he wanted to use for display and sales. It was different than the one that was approved, and I told him that he would have to, if that's the plan he wanted to go with, he would have to reapply.
Steve, is the petitioner currently selling cars and equipment out of this particular spot as we speak, or?
Yes.
And have been since '02?
On the screen, and I believe in your information packet, are instructions to people who would want to sell motor vehicles on his property. They fill out the form, they pick a spot, and they abide by the conditions stated on the application form. So it is being run as a business. The applicant, I think, should speak for himself as far as how that's working out.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Is the applicant here, please? I don't think we have an applicant. Guess open it up to public, public input. If anybody would like to speak on this item, please come forward. If there isn't any, I guess look for commission action.
I have a question for Steve, if I could. Steve, if we move forward with action on this tonight and we revoke this conditional use permit, what's the time lapse for reapplication? Because in a sense, he would have to shut his business down.
He would during the timeframe that he is reapplying for approval of a plan. His plan is substantially different than the one that was approved, so he could apply immediately for a new conditional use permit.
So it could happen within 30 days, 60 days?
The next deadline is September 8 for applications to the October Planning Commission meeting. I saw his plan today, and it was sufficient that he could proceed with an application.
And then would have to go forward to council? No, just come through this body. Thank you.
Okay. Is there commission action?
Mister Chair, I would make the motion to send this item to the city council with the recommendation to revoke the conditional use permit.
Okay, there's a motion. Motion second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item 13 is revoked for the conditional use permit. Item 14 is a rezone from the AG Agriculture District to the Falcon Heights Plan Development District at East 57th Street and Highway 11. Staff report.
Good evening again. The applicant is proposing to rezone the subject property, as you stated, to the Falcon Heights Plan Development. This is a new plan development district that encompasses about 94 acres. The applicant was before you in June, on June 4 of 2008 with a future land use amendment request, that the northern, northern portion of the site was designated as commercial land use, and the southern half was designated as multi-use, mixed use. The, the recommendation from the Planning Commission at that time was for approval, and the city council approved that future land use designation on July 7 of 2008. The applicant has come forward with the conceptual site plan, as you can see on your screen at this time, that indicates on the, and has broken the area into four different subareas. As you know, PDs work by incorporating subareas underneath, tied to underlying zoning districts. The subarea A will allow uses associated with the RA1 Residential District, the C4 Plan Commercial District, and the O Office District. And this subarea is located on the southwest side of the subject property, adjacent to the old South Dakota Highway 11. Subarea B will allow uses associated with RA2 Residential District, the C4 Plan Commercial District, and the O Office District. This subarea is located east of subarea A in the south-central portion of the subject property. Subarea C, which is located just to the east of this one, will allow uses associated with the RA1, the C4, and the O Office District. And subarea D, the last subarea, will allow uses associated solely with the C4 Plan Develop, Plan Commercial District. And this subarea comprises the north portion of the subject property and is adjacent to East 57th Street. For further information, RA1 Residential District allows for density, which is incorporated by subareas A and C, and this allows for residential density between 10 and 17 units per acre. RA2, which is the south-central portion, allows for residential density in excess of 17 units per acre. The applicant has written into the subarea regulations, stipulations calling for the planning director's approval of the master parking plan, master sign plan, and master landscaping plan to be brought forward at the time of final development plan applications. Because of the unique nature and uses of the planned, planned development district, the applicants are unable at this time to provide specific criteria or locations for the above categories, and the planning director's approval of the master plans must be granted prior to the approval of the final development plans. A subarea plan, or subdivision plan, preliminary subdivision plan has not yet been submitted, but this will be required before the applicant can plat the land or apply for final development. As far as setbacks and required yards, those are in accordance with the underlying zoning districts, with the exception of that in mixed-use buildings, setbacks in accordance with the C4 Plan Commercial District will be required. And those are buildings which encompass multiple uses, office on the lower level, residential upper. And building lots and locations will be further defined by the submittal and approval of a preliminary subdivision plan, plats, and a final development plan. From the, this concept plan is merely that, it's a concept plan. As far as utilities, the city does not currently have plans to construct the water lines to the subject property within the next five years, but the applicants have the option to construct those lines at their own expense and to coordinate, and they would have to coordinate water main construction with the city engineering department at that time. The sewer system is available at the site, and the developers are required to participate in the east side sanitary sewer cost recovery. And as far as drainage goes, regional BMP has not yet been constructed in this area, and so the applicant would be responsible for constructing an interim BMP until the final one was completed. This plan is complete for review by the Planning Commission, and because the subject application and proposed subarea regulations provide for unique development opportunity and conform with the 2015 Growth Management Plan, staff recommends approval of the proposed rezoning. That concludes staff report.
Questions for Dave? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening. I'm Bob Nats, 2505 South Poclaire Drive. Here to answer any questions from that.
Any questions for Bob?
Mister Chair, Bob, in looking at this concept plan, I think it looks great. I recognize, and I suspect it was part of your intent, to try to create as many opportunities or potential opportunities there for open space.
Yes, absolutely.
Landscaping. It's not the static, inline developments that we typically see, so thank you for that.
Thank you, mister. Any other questions? Okay, guess not. Thank you, Bob. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action on item 14?
Move for approval of item 14.
I second.
There's a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item 14 is recommended for approval. Item 15 has been deferred by the applicant until the next meeting. That is a rezone from the O Office District and RA1 Residential District to the C4 Plan Commercial District and the RA1 Residential District for allowed uses at East 41st Street and South Dakota Highway 11. Item 16 has also been deferred by the applicant until next meeting. That's a rezone from the RD Residential District and the RS2 Residential District to the RD Residential District and RA1 Residential District for allowed uses at East 41st Street and Highway 11. Item 17 has been deferred until next meeting by the applicant. That is a rezone from the AG Agriculture District to the RD and RA1 Residential Districts for allowed uses at East 41st Street and Highway 11. And item 18 has been deferred by the applicant until next meeting. That's a conditional use permit in the AG Agriculture District to allow a sand and gravel quarry at 5020 East Rice Street. Our next item then on the agenda is item 19, which is a conditional use permit in the C3 Central Business District to allow a full-service restaurant at 334 South Phillips Avenue. Staff report.
Hello again. This is a full-service restaurant conditional use permit, and the reason this is before you tonight, and this is the very first one of these that you've seen. In June of 2008, the city council approved an ordinance amendment which redefined the classifications of restaurants and on-sale alcohol establishments. I will go through this first and then, and then explain the revisions to that, to that explanation. Basically, this is a, this is a transfer of a license. The applicant is working with the city finance office at this time to get the license transferred, pending approval of the conditional use permit and favorable hearing at the city council. We are recommending approval of this transfer and the conditional use permit. The hours of operation for the, for the establishment are 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM on Friday, and 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM on Saturdays. We are recommending approval with two stipulations. One is the security management plan shall be approved by the Sioux Falls Police Department, and this approval is for this applicant only. As far as how the zoning, zoning ordinance was revised, there's three different types of classifications of restaurants or on-sale alcohol at this time. The first is on on-sale alcohol establishment, which is something that you're familiar with. This is basically a bar, club type of use where the primary purpose of this establishment is to provide entertainment and/or alcohol sales. The second is a restaurant, which is food service only and does not include alcohol sales. And the third is the full-service restaurant. And that's what's before you tonight. The full-service restaurant is primarily established for the purposes of serving food, but is allowed to sell alcohol then. And they are normally allowed as long as they meet one stipulation, and that is if they are with, outside of a 100-foot radius of residential uses. If they're not outside of that radius, then they have to come before you for a conditional use permit, and they are, and they've got residential right above them. So that's why they're here tonight. And that concludes staff report. I can provide any further information on the zoning if you'd like.
Any questions for Dave? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Amy Warren.
Anything else to add?
No, I don't.
Okay. Any questions for Amy? Guess not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action on item 19?
I'll make a motion to approve item 19 with the two stipulations as stated.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second for approval with the two stipulations. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item 19 is approved with two stipulations. Item 20 is a conditional use permit in the S Institutional District to allow college use within 150 feet of residential district zoning at 2001 South Norton Avenue. Staff report, please.
Now, the applicant is proposing to develop student housing on the subject property. It's an existing structure with existing parking. It's the former Ronald McDonald House, if you know where that's at, on Norton Avenue. They're building a new one. Now, the applicant's owners are represented by Frank Hughes of Augustana College and Ronald McDonald House Charities of South Dakota. It's about a third of an acre site, and in the expansion of student housing for the campus, the theme housing program has been working well for them, and they've decided to include this as part of their theme housing. Building plans provided by the applicant indicate accommodations for up to 20 students. Initially, they would not have that many. In the basement, they have laundry storage, mechanical and unassigned spaces. On the first floor, it's living, dining, kitchen, and bedrooms, and on the second floor, bedrooms and support spaces. They've provided floor plans, dimensions, site plan, indicating parking onsite and offsite. They have to indicate some additional parking offsite in order to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. They've done so in their plan. It's to the south of the property, well within 300 feet, and accessible to the students as they negotiate the campus on foot. It's 13 additional spaces reserved offsite for the house in the existing parking lot at the corner of West 29th Street and South Norton Avenue. Staff indicates that the reserved spaces should be marked as such for the, this particular student housing location. Otherwise, the applicant has been asked to report any neighborhood comments at the public hearing this evening, and staff has not received any calls from, from the neighborhood concerning the project. We're recommending approval with two stipulations. The first one being offsite required parking is to be signed as being reserved for student housing on the subject property. And two, they should update their campus master parking plan, which is on file in the city zoning office to reflect the new student housing and parking that's required and provided. That concludes staff report.
Questions for Steve? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Frank Hughes, Augustana College, 2001 South Summit.
Anything else to add?
We did hold a neighborhood meeting, and we did have two neighbors represented there, and their main concern was regarding parking. That was the overriding concern from the neighborhood.
neighbors, and we did go through the explanation of the nine existing stalls on site, as well as the plan to incorporate an additional thirteen stalls to the south on the adjacent parking lot, and they seemed satisfied with that response.
How many students is the plan to be living there?
Well, potentially up to twenty-two, but we're thinking, as I think Steve mentioned, probably twenty is more realistic. We have, you know, accommodations for twenty-two parking stalls within the plan.
Any questions for Frank?
Mister Chair, Frank, I know that the Ronald McDonald House is just starting construction, so the timeline for Augustana to occupy this existing Ronald McDonald House would be?
Well, we could potentially take possession in June of oh-nine.
So it's next summer.
So it's a little ways off here, yeah.
And I understand that the theme house process that you've had in place for some years now has been relatively successful.
Yes, very much so, and it is a very competitive process that, that we go through to receive proposals from groups of students to live in the, in the houses, so they're, they're very well screened, and it's very competitive in terms of their standing with the college and their community service.
Right, thank you. I have a question on that you just mentioned, and made me think of something, do you decide what the theme is, or do the students decide?
Most of the time, the students get together as a group on their own and decide what, what their community service or theme would be, yes.
And then does it continue on forever, and?
No, it's a year-by-year basis.
Oh, it's a year, so the theme house could change every year?
Yes.
Very good. Any other questions for Frank?
I just commend Augie on this, I think it's a great use of this property, and I think it's been proven now that the theme houses are attractive, students are attracted to the neighborhood, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on item twenty? If not, is there commission action?
I'll move for approval of item twenty.
I'll second.
With two stipulations.
All right, there's a motion and a second with two stipulations, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item twenty is approved with two stipulations. Item twenty-one is adjourned, is there a motion?
I move to approve, I mean, I move to adjourn.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, meeting is adjourned.